Okay, so we're gonna get started. Do you have a little wave so they know we're ready? All right, welcome. May 1st, school committee meeting. Almost the end of the school year, it's getting exciting. Can you all please stand for the pledge to the flag, which is behind you on the wall? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have some special guests here tonight, and I can't wait to hear this presentation. But first, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public statement? All right, well then, we're gonna go right into our reports and presentations. And the first report is the student advisory report.
So, this month at the Bourne Intermediate School was the school spotlight, so I'd like to invite Zoe Dunne to take us on.
Sorry, we're not queued up yet.
Oh, do you need a minute?
At least till it runs out.
Okay, I'll just take a quick minute.
Sorry.
You're doing a good job.
Sorry, I made you stand there.
You got it, Zoe.
Sorry for the delay.
That's okay.
It's usually on.
Do you need, want me to do my announcements first?
I think that would be cool.
Okay, I'll just, Zoe, if you wanna stay there, you can. If not, you can just sit for a quick minute. I'll just do my announcements very quickly. My first announcement is that we are gonna be very sad this is Paul McMaster's last meeting with us tonight, and I just want to say thank you so much. You have been just such an asset to the school committee, and I would not have been able to get through the last four years without you.
Thank you.
So, thank you for all of your hard work and your time and your effort, and we will miss you very much.
It's been a lot.
You've been my right-hand man. Thank you. And we have Carrie returning to us after the election, and then we still have one seat open, so we'll see if there's any write-ins. And that'll be in a few weeks. And we also will have a new student advisory member of the school committee, and so Mac will be graduating, and Mac has done a phenomenal job as a student representative. And again, it can be very sad to see you go, but you're on to college, which is so exciting. So, congratulations. So, round of applause for Mac. And did you wanna just tell us who the next student will be?
Of course. Next year, taking my seat, is Addison Dion. I'm very excited. I know that she will do great things for us, and I'm really excited to see what she does.
We're excited to have Addie with us, and she'll get to sit at the table the next meeting if she wants. But thank you, thanks for all of your hard work, Mac. And then, just a couple of quick announcement, other announcements. June, our meeting is gonna be a little bit earlier. We'll have a short school committee meeting in June for Navigator Awards. We were not gonna have too many topics on the agenda, because then, that night is Bourne celebrates everyone at the high school, so we'll just move right from the media center to Bourne celebrates everyone. And attend that wonderful event. And then, the last announcement is just about Navigator Awards. Just to teachers and staff members, Navigator Awards, the applications are open. I hope that staff members are filling them out. This year, we have, staff can also nominate other staff members, so that's a very exciting change, and we're excited to see who gets nominated and who we can present awards to next month. And that is all I have. Are we ready for the presentation?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's usually set up, and I really can't figure out how to do it, so I might need to phone a friend.
Oh, okay.
What are you trying to do? Sorry.
It's not connecting.
Is there an internet problem?
Mine's not connecting either. I just...
I can't get on the internet.
I'm on the internet.
Monday, the Wi-Fi was down in the college factory.
Yeah, Monday was a firewall thing, yeah, but, no, I have internet, I just don't have connection to there, so, let me see if something's just loose. Again, I apologize. We could go into other reports and presentations. I'm sorry to make the kids wait, because this is a beautiful presentation, so I wanna be able to show it. So, yeah. Let me just check connections, as in, are things plugged in?
Oh. Do you...
We're up.
Oh, okay. Yes, but you can't take that up earlier. We can't take that up.
Very technical.
Plug it in.
Let me check connections. All right. Ready to roll, and thank you for your patience.
You're good.
All set?
Okay. So, this past month at the Bourne Intermediate School was Military Child Appreciation Month and Recognition. So, all throughout April, they recognized different military students and the service that they do to our community and being in school. And on the 12th, there was a day of celebration for these students and families, and Dr. Zhou was able to lead the school in the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. And then, the event was to recognize the intermediate school and the town of Bourne being entered into MIC-III, which is the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission, or, and it's dedicated to supporting children and military families that are impacted by frequent relocation across the country throughout their time of service, and it helps to ensure that they reach their graduation requirements and their transcripts are transferred across all states and schools just except they're in. And this came with recognition from the governor's office and the Massachusetts State Commissioner for MIC-III, who is a previous Navy Admiral, John Clark Rosali, presented Dr. Zhou with the Governor Mara Healy's proclamation, and Mara Healy also appointed Dr. Zhou as a member of the state council to MIC-III. So, she's now representing Bourne on that state council. And so, like I said, throughout the month of April, different military kids are recognized, and this is a picture of some of the military kids who are being recognized as heroes across the intermediate school as well. And then, at this event, we got to hear student testimonies from two different students who are, have been impacted by being military children. We got to hear from Madison Hamel, who's in 4th grade, and Becca Grimes, who's in 3rd grade, and we also are gonna get to hear from them a little bit later. So, all the military students were then presented with certificates for recognition of being service children as their parents or somebody in their family serves in the military, so they're impacted by those moves a lot. And then, the next slide is just a list of all the kids across Bourne Intermediate School who are a part of this community, and then, we have some pictures from the event. And moving on, after that presentation and, like, celebration, members of the BIS B2B Student Council got to greet members of the military and their families as they went to the media center for freshmen, and then, Dr. Smith, who is the music director at the intermediate school, got to lead songs and anthems from each branch of the military with other students. And then, Dr. Zhou was presented with a proclamation along with other Massachusetts state representatives and dignitaries were also there. And then, throughout April, BIS military students also got the invitation to speak on for the intercom every morning and to give some fun facts about being in the military and being a military kid and different branches of the military every morning. And we're now going to invite up our students, who are going to give their testimonies. We have 4th grader Madison Hamel and 3rd grader Becca Grimes. Whoever wants to go first?
Welcome, girls.
I'm... Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Becca, Becca Elizabeth Grimes. I am nine years old and in 3rd grade here at BIS. I live with my dad, mom, older twin brothers, Pachi, which is Grandma in Polish, and our dog, Harry. I am a military kid. My dad, my dad Patrick Robert Grimes is in the United States Coast Guard. He has been for over 14 years. My father has been stationed in five different states and once in, once in another country. I have lived in three different states myself. I was born in Maryland, then we moved to Connecticut. While in Connecticut, my dad went overseas to Bahrain for 14 months. It was a long 14 months without him. Now, we live here in Cape Cod, Massachusetts, but we will be transferring this summer. My dad is a 1-class Patee Officer, a CS-1. He cooks lots of yummy meals for the men and women for the United States Coast Guard. My favorite thing about being a military kid is making new friends and living in new places. What I am most excited about this move is, in my new house, I will get my own room. My name is Madison Hamel. My dad, Richard Hamel, works full-time Air National Guard. He has been in the Air Force for 17 years. He works as a communications project engineer with the 212th Engineering and Solutions Squadron. In 2022, my dad deployed to Qatar for seven months. I miss him so much. I have been lucky that I always lived in Massachusetts and haven't had to move. The best part about being a military kid is having a lot of pride knowing my dad serves in the military and protects our country.
Are you in 3rd grade as well?
No, I'm in 4th.
4th grade. Well, you both did a fantastic job presenting and talking about your dads. Thank you. Thank you to your fathers as well.
Thank you.
That's great. Well, if I could just say, I was at the original event, and you were both stellar then, and I enjoyed hearing it again, so thank you. It was a beautiful event and really well-attended, lots of military families for the reception. I had a great time talking with the kiddos about their favorite mini muffins and all the amazing things that were out for everyone to eat. They couldn't believe that they were the stars of the day, and they could stay as long as they wanted, so that was a lot of fun. But yeah, it was, it was a wonderful event. Bourne hosts a Purple Up Day every year, but this year was special because we had all the state representatives and the proclamation that I believe Mrs. Norton has with her. Someone has the proclamation? And we don't have to read it all, but do know that it will be in full display in a beautiful frame to stay at BIS forever, so it's really very nice. We were happy about that. And I'm proud to serve on this commission. I'm the only, it's all right, I'm the only superintendent for the whole state, so I'll serve on this commission for two years. There's a commission in every single state, so I was really proud to step up.
Yeah.
Great.
Great.
One more round of applause for the kiddos.
Thank you for showing that. Beautiful proclamation. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I already did my report, so...
I thought so, I'm like, okay. Well, then, moving on to superintendent's report, we have more special guests to invite up here, so I know they're BHS internship students, and if you wouldn't mind coming maybe to the podium, because that's where the microphone is for cable. They can hear you if you're there. Feel free to pass it, if you don't wanna all be at the podium.
Oh, they do wanna all be at the podium. They do.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Strode. I'm the internship coordinator here at Bourne High School. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to the students in just a minute. I did tell them they better up their game after that presentation, so hopefully, hopefully they will. One thing, one point to note before I introduce them, they are all students in the theater program, and they are all participating in Beauty and the Beast coming up May 16th, 17th, and 18th, so we hope that everyone can join us then, because they are phenomenal as people and as actors, so. I also wanna recognize Mac over there, who is also a senior intern, who can answer any questions about this event as well. So, I would like to turn it over to Logan Broadway, Ella Keith, and Maddy Moore. Thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Ella Keith, and I am a senior intern. My internship is with Mrs. Kelly in 1st grade at Bourneville Elementary. It has really been a great experience. I'm headed to Salvi Regina University in the fall to study elementary education and theater arts.
My name is Logan Broadway. I'm also a senior intern. My internship is with Bourne TV, and I've been doing a lot of editing and producing content for them. I am intending Salem State University in the fall to major in acting.
My name is Madison Moore, and I intern with Mrs. Perry, Erin Perry, at the Cape Cod Commission. Lovely lady, love her. I am also part of the Life and Environmental Science Innovation Career Pathway, which is all about environmental studies and, and I am attending Cape Cod Community College in the fall, and I plan to major in environmental science.
We are here to formally invite you to our senior showcase, where all of the senior interns will share what they have learned through their experiences.
We have seniors who have interned at a variety of local organizations and businesses, such as the Bourne Police Department, Interiors by Donnell, Massachusetts Maritime Academy, Cape Cod Healthcare, the Consumer Assistance Council, the Bourne Enterprise, Caldwell Banker, and the Recoit Bay Research Center, plus several others.
The senior showcase will be held on May 21st from 4:00 to 6:30 p.m. We will host a reception for interns, their mentors, families, and invited guests from 4:00 to 4:45 p.m. There will be a future educator signing ceremony from 4:45 to 5:00 p.m., then, a public viewing of the senior internship experiences from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. We hope that you will all be able to join us as invited guests on the 21st.
Thank you for your time. We look forward to seeing you at the showcase.
Thank you very much.
They're happy to answer any questions you might have, as they scurry away, but I also, I'd also like to recognize that today is also Decision Day for high school seniors, so you'll notice they're wearing their college gear, so, very exciting for them.
Any questions for them? No questions for them?
No. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I love the enthusiastic invite passing out.
I love it, I know.
So, I'm looking forward to that event. It's usually one of my favorites, so I'll definitely be there. And then, just to finish my section of the report, April, even though it was a short month, because we had our vacation in the middle, had so many things, including, you might hear it in the principals as well, but some of my favorites that I attended was the poetry slams here at the high school. What an amazing event, where our own Bourne High School poets and Bourne Middle School poets came together with some surrounding other community schools, and then, they had a workshop, they had an open mic, and then, they had an all-out slam right to the end, where they had to produce a few lines just right off the cuff, the finalists. So, it was really exciting, really fun, and very supportive environment for the kiddos that were there. We also had the SCC Academic All-Stars, which is SCC, as many of you know, is our athletic conference, but it's also more than that. It's really a group of high schools that, you know, really try to support each other, and what they do is they honor the top five students of every one of those schools all at a banquet. It's a really nice banquet. They always bring back a recent alum to kind of tell the recently graduating seniors what it's like in the real world, so we were able to, to hear from someone who is two years out, and it's always inspiring to hear from the kids that are a few years out, and then, to really know that the kids that are with us are just the top of, top of their game, just lovely students. And then, lastly, we've had a lot of appreciation already and some more appreciation to come, but I do wanna recognize our bus drivers, our assistant principals, and today is Principal's Day, so I do wanna formally recognize our principals. They're an amazing group of unsung heroes. I know they've been honored today, showered with flowers and notes. I was in a few of the schools, and it was, I had, I'd taken away Mrs. Carbonito to do a learning walk, and we were, you know, we were out and about in the school, and when she, when she finally emerged back in the hall, you must have had, how many 2nd graders surround you? Where have you been? We've been trying to see you. We've been trying to give you these cards. It was really, really, really a lot of fun. Like, I better return you to the, to the main office suite before I get in trouble. So, that was a lot of fun today. But we also have coming up our appreciation of all of our staff members, and it's just, you know, it's just a, a really exciting month to honor people who do really important jobs throughout our schools, so I wanted to say that. You'll hear more about the events from our, our principals and, and directors. This evening, Dr. Starkey is at Bridgewater State University for their annual job fair, so she's hopefully finding us some really amazing candidates. She's out there with QR codes and Bourne Purple and, you know, trying to let others know how wonderful we are for our open positions, so of course, she's excused tonight, and then, you'll hear from a few other people that are filling in. So, I believe Kristin, Miss Donahue, has our teaching and learning update from Barbara, and then, if you'd like to do yours right after that. I have Krista's too. And you have Krista's too. Well, we're just gonna listen to you for a little while.
All right. So, Dr. Starkey shares her apologies for missing tonight, but again, she's at Bridgewater State Career Fair, trying to recruit our soon-to-be graduates from Bridgewater. She does express her congratulations to the interns who we're highlighting tonight. They represent themselves and their peers at BHS very well. Congratulations as well to Anne Marie Strode, who continues to develop the talents of our fine high school canalman. Lisa Dex and our BES and BIS teachers hosted a visit from Duxbury Public Schools this past week. The folks at Duxbury are interested in adopting the ARC, our K-25 reading program, and we're seeking our input in order to make an informed decision. Lisa Milner, the elementary curriculum director from Duxbury, sent the following. "We want to thank you again for hosting us Monday. You and your staff were so kind to donate time in classrooms to such a large group. We appreciate all the planning you put into the day to allow us to get so much out of the visit. Your openness and honesty was especially helpful. Please let your teachers know how impressive their work was to all of us, their adaptability and their efforts you all have put into making ARC what you need was visible, especially in the student engagement in every room we saw. Please let us know if, if you ever need anything from us." BPS Administration also thanks all of our teachers and Lisa Dex for hosting that event. A reminder to families that there are still a few spots available for our summer enrichment offerings. Information is still available on our website and has been sent to families via email. They do need to register before June 1st, and many other items in the world of teaching and learning will be shared by the principals in the reports this evening. I can't do that with her flair. Okay. Special ed? I don't have much to report, but I'll be doing a lot of talking tonight. So, most of the focus has been on development of our in-district ESY program. We are fully staffed at this time and are working with families on the logistics as far as registering and commitments and all of those kinds of things. We've gotten a really positive response rate from our families, so we're really happy about that. We will be focusing on individual academic skills, of course, but we are exploring some fun activities to embed into our program, because it is summer after all. Districts across Massachusetts are also completing the special ed increment forms for school choice, so that goal is to have that report done by the end of the week. And as I mentioned last time, we are in the data collection phase for our indicators, 7, 8, and 13, both 2-hour in early childhood, and one is a 14-year-old plus transition, so those initial entries are due by June 7th. So, that's it from special ed?
Technology. Do you want me to...
Yes, please. Okay. So, the technology update. The technology department has had a busy month supporting MCAS and continuing to work with staff on improving our Wi-Fi coverage, as well as improving our cybersecurity environment. The Safer Schools and Communities Grant has been closed out, and all of the hardware installed at all our schools with the money is fully operational. Mr. Oliver, along with Mr. Geis, attended a two-day intensive training at Joint Base Cape Cod in April on campus emergencies, and the school department will be meeting with the Bourne Public Safety Partners in the coming weeks to discuss a more integrated training opportunity as a result of this training. Technology Committee, do you want to save that one?
I'm gonna save that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And budget and facilities, Mr. Geis.
Everybody, next few months are probably our busiest time of the year, as we close out one financial year and open up the next. Currently, we've spent about 97% of the budget. It's either expended or encumbered. It's pretty much what we would expect at this time of the year. I'm happy to report that our most recent audit on the town side, we passed with flying colors. They audited our title grants, our SPED cluster grants, and our ESER grants, and all spending was in compliance, and there were no findings. A big thank you to Barbara Starkey and Kristin Donahue for their diligence in managing their respective grants, and I would be remiss without a big shout-out to Susan Miko, who manages all our grants, as well as Katie Russo, who assists in making sure that all invoices hit the right accounts. They play critical roles in making sure we are in compliance, so I wanna thank them publicly. On another happy note, we were selected for a food service audit this year. Yay. The financial in-person audit is next Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Should be a real joy, and...
What's a food service audit? Doesn't the state provide food for free for the children?
Yes, but you have to, they make sure that you're in compliance with all the regulations. So, we've been through the sort of the nuts and bolts compliance before, which is just operational, but the financial audit is something new that they've rolled out, and we, our lucky number was drawn, so it'll be a great learning experience for all, I'm sure. We still have, don't have a date for our in-person operational audit yet. It's May. We're still waiting.
It's happening this school year?
That's what they said back in September. Yeah, so, maybe I'll just hold my breath. Facility side, Train has been working on the design for the HVAC replacement at the wastewater treatment plant, and I was just notified today that the new big rooftop unit is, has been delivered. It's on-site at the Train facility, so that project is on track to be completed early this summer. In addition, GCG Associates is finalizing their design specs for all the other smaller repairs, the clarifier, the rebuilding of the denitrification cell number one, the pump system, and hopefully, that will get out to bid within the next month and a half or so, and that work should also be completed this summer as well. As a reminder, town meeting is Monday. Everybody, go out there and participate in this great civic activity and vote. We do have several capital items up at this, as well as our, our operational budget. We've got $2.1 million for the wastewater treatment plant, for the repair of the, the replacement of the RBC wheels. We've got another $30,000 that we're requesting to finish up the design of the Jackson Field Bleacher Project, as well as $40,000 for a new compressor at the middle school, so that they have some semblance of air conditioning in there, hopefully this summer.
That sounds promising.
And that concludes my report.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, I'd like to welcome up the principals to give their announcements, custom presence events, and then I'll close this out.
Not gonna lie, I was a little jealous of Madison hopping right up on that little, that little stool. Where has that been every meeting? And I have heels on, I still might need it. So, we're in May, hard to believe, but it certainly is trying to pack everything in this month. It's kind of the name of the game. So, on Friday, we do have Lunchero Day. The kids love to celebrate their cafeteria heroes, so we are very appreciative for them feeding our kids every day with those healthy meals. We also have Director Day, so Director Clements and Lisa Dex for all of their hard work every day. Can't do it without them. Next week, we are super excited to celebrate the staff. Don't even know where to begin. Our teachers, our ESPs, our school nurses, everybody who makes the, the school day run. The students love to celebrate them. They are their heroes, so to be able to tell them how much they appreciate them. The student council has started to come up with some ideas for how we're going to celebrate. They're doing a reverse parade in the building, so instead of the teachers cheering the students on, they want the teachers to be the parade, and the kids are gonna cheer them on. They're going to dress as their favorite teachers a couple of days, so they've really put a lot of thought into what would show the teachers the biggest appreciation. PTA champions are hosting breakfasts and lunches and all kinds of great things, so hopefully, the teachers will feel the love next week. Along with that, it's always a tricky week, because it's screen-free week, so the kids are a little on edge that they don't get to use their devices all week. are a little on edge that they don't get to use their devices all week, so it might not be the best combination. But Jen Ward, who is our health teacher, puts together some great bingo boards and things to really get the kids outside, moving, reading more books, and just being more active during that week. The Tuesday and Thursday of that week, Lisa Dex is running the BES Problem Solvers, so she's working with the EIE materials and hosting two after-school events for STEAM activities with the students. I'm sure you'll hear from Mrs. Norton. They were very successful over at BIS, so the first and second graders are really looking forward to having that hosted at Borndale. On Tuesday, the fourteenth, we have our Unified Arts Night, so Mrs. Boland, Mrs. Sheehy, Mrs. Ward, Mrs. Perry, and Mrs. McCullough have put together a night which will showcase all the work that the students have been doing throughout the year. Some of them are hosting some activities in their spaces, so it's a chance not only for the students to show off the work they're doing, but also show how they might be doing some of that work at the station. So it's a really cool night. We have Field Day coming up on the twenty-second. We have our incoming kindergarten students coming in on the twenty-eighth for backyard games, which Ms. Alexander and Mrs. Cleary help us host every year along with Mrs. Danker. And then we have another opportunity for students to grab their summer reading books at another book nook. And the Student Council work right now has been pretty exceptional. So again, the kids are working on everything from the themes of the Teacher Appreciation Week. They're working on end-of-year activities for our step-up day in the building, so what each of the students will be doing in the classrooms that they might go to. They've created a lovely list of suggestions from Mrs. Norton for what they would like to do when they go to BIS for their transition day to step up over at BIS. Today is our star-studded Wednesday, so they have been very reflective of the B2B behaviors in the building and where we're having some difficulty or where at the end of the year it's kind of more behaviors popping up, if you will, that are unexpected. So one of the things that the second graders thought was, it's great that the teachers hand out tickets and the staff tell the students when they're seeing those expected behaviors, but they thought it would be very important for them to be able to recognize other students who are showing those behaviors. So they asked if we could have special tickets on Wednesdays, and each class in the second grade is responsible for going around and finding students exhibiting those expected behaviors, and they are able to distribute the tickets for that day. So it's a really neat way for them to kind of pump up their peers and show them that they're seeing those behaviors in the building. And last but not least, to kind of round out the school year, we had started, this is probably their biggest project, they're working on a draft of the student handbook. So we had started the year presenting and had a lot of great feedback. We vetted that feedback through our school council, which was parents and teachers to get what their opinions were on everything. And then once the Student Council was established, we talked to them about how they utilize that handbook, how they understand and interpret that handbook, how we might teach those skills throughout the day. So they're actually coming up with a paper version of kind of those expected behaviors that list that out for the students as well. So even though that won't be voted on here, stay tuned, because I'm sure you will see it.
Thank you.
I think Principal Copanito may have broken the record tonight.
I have to outdo your last one.
What'd you say?
I have to outdo your last one.
This is my last one? I think we have June still, right?
We have June. One more time.
One more time. Then I can drop the mic, right? So I did want to just say, just a quick comment about the Purple Up and thank you to Dr. Jo for everything she did to help get the proclamation and get, I just want to clarify that it's for all of the Bourne schools, it's just the event was held at BIS, so it's because all the schools do recognize Purple Up. But I do think it was really amazing. I think it probably is the most attentive I've ever seen an entire student body paying attention to not just the girls when they were speaking, but to the Admiral and to you, Dr. Jo, and to everybody else there. And the singing actually happened in the gymnasium with the entire school, and it was really amazing that we did the different military anthems, but the one that really got me was the National Anthem. We did whole-school a cappella, and I literally had to leave and go in the cafeteria and compose myself because it was just really emotional. And just to see those thirty-plus kids with their, you know, hero t-shirts on and getting their certificates and being honored, it's, because you listen to Maddie and you listen to Rebecca, and then you times it by all of those kids, and it's just such a significant population of kids in our school. So it just was, it was really just an incredible event, so thank you to everybody and to my team of teachers who helped put it together. So other parts of the month, so I know every time I come up here, I always talk about BIS singers and recorders and the after-school band. Well, we finally had our culminating performances the past couple of weeks. So we, we had one last week and then one, was it last night? God, I've already lost track.
Last night?
Yeah, last night. It was so amazing, the kids just, you know, and Principal Borni can probably attest to this, when you just see that point in time when being a musician becomes part of kids' identity, and so it was just really incredible to see them. And we had a special visit from Mrs. Selgado, from the music teacher from the middle school, and you could even kind of see a relief in some of the fifth-grade students' faces that, you know, now they can look ahead, they can see what's coming at the middle school. So we want to thank her for coming and all the kind things that she said about our Dr. Smith. And then just to refer back to what Principal Copanito said about Lisa Dex and our curriculum director, and she's amazing every day, all day, all year long, but especially with these engineering clubs that we ran, problem solvers after school. The kids were so highly engaged, the materials were wonderful, Dr. Starkey helped, we had students from the high school there helping, and Mrs. Cleary, of course, is always so dedicated, but I think Mrs. Dex misses teaching a little bit. She was pretty animated and very funny, and so it was wonderful to see that. In terms of our K kids, they're continuing their civic action, and they did a big canal cleanup. I think we were happy that the Chamber of Commerce had their big cleanup the weekend before, so it was a little less work to do. Coming up, though, we have, as Principal Copanito and Dr. Jo said, all the appreciation days that we have coming up. So we just want to say thank you to the staff and students for everything that they do, and our cafeteria staff who's coming up this, on Friday. But also a very big thanks to the PTA, because a lot of these events wouldn't be as special, you know, or as, as well-done if it weren't for their efforts in terms of the fundraising behind it. So we want to say thank you to them. We also have, coming up with is our art show, which we're having an eighties throwback theme. You know, our very talented Jillian Donovan has got this. We've been working with wind groups and our classes all year long to get ready for this special event, so we're excited. We're going to have an eighty throwback dress-up day, so I can't wait to see all the outfits. I did have to Google it because I wasn't, I couldn't really remember what it was back then. So I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to, it wasn't like the fifties where the fashion sticks out to you, you know what I mean? So we had to take a look back.
Really?
Yeah. What was, name one thing from the eighties. Come on, Donal, name one thing from where you were in high school.
Hockey uniform.
Hockey uniform all the time. Okay. And then we have the Marionettes Puppet Show coming for a time ever, which is great. We do have the Senior Walk coming up, which is a fan favorite, Plymouth Plantation, the, we have our field trip to the Tribal Center, which is great. And most excitedly, we have Bourne Middle School students coming over Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, possibly Wednesday. Trying to figure out the schedule, so they can present their civic action projects. So we're very excited to learn about water pollution, ocean pollution, and all that good stuff. So that's what's happening at BIS. Thank you.
Thank you. A few recent celebrations at the middle school. Monday, coming back from April vacation, our eighth grade hosted a climate change film festival to celebrate Earth Day. All of our students completed climate change documentaries in conjunction with BCTV. They then voted on the best ones. The teachers made a final decision about the winning films, which were shown in a film festival format, and the winning students also got little Emmy statuettes. It was fantastic. And so kudos to Shauna Eight Flag and Melissa Parish for their work, and all of our eighth grade students really rose to the occasion for that. So that was really a fitting celebration of Earth Day. Following a very successful ELA MCAS in early April, we had our first day of math today with our second day tomorrow. Students are well-prepared, and we're really proud to see students continuing to give their best effort, taking their time and working really hard. Our grade eight students are going to keep at it for the next couple of weeks. They have science, the STE test next week, and fifty percent of our eighth graders will participate in the civics MCAS pilot the week following that. Students who do not participate in the pilot will be completing the civics DBQR regular end-of-year benchmark. So we are interested to see that assessment as well. We are also looking forward to celebrating Director Jessie Clements, our curriculum director, on Friday, and also our special education director, Kate Hartley, in our building, as well as our Lunch Heroes. And I want to thank our PTA, who has lots in store for our BMS staff. We are actually going to celebrate our staff a week late, because next week, which is our staff appreciation week, our sixth grade is away. So our PTA has planned to celebrate when all of our staff is there together the week after. Tonight, our METG Festival Theater participants were off for their tech rehearsal of their competition play called Cave Dream. They will be presenting their public preview at 7:00 p.m. on Friday in the auditorium before they travel to Noss at Middle School on Saturday to compete with other local area schools. That is a really talented group of students. They've worked very hard, so we hope to see you there, 7:00 p.m. Friday at Cave Dream. Many, as Principal Norton just said, many of our eighth grade students will be visiting BIS this week. I think we have one group trying to make their way over the bridge to BES. We have one group presenting at the high school as well. But Principal Norton has certainly, and the staff at BIS has been incredibly accommodating. We have a lot of students heading over there to present their sort of action component of their civic action project, if you will. We got some previews yesterday during our learning walk of the many lessons and learning activities that the students have prepared, and they are outstanding. So we are really excited for that. We have our annual Curriculum Night, Ice Cream Social, and Book Fair on Tuesday, May fourteenth. The civic action projects will also be on display. They're having their civic action project, like showcase during the day, and so the civic action projects will all be on display during our Curriculum Night. There will be student work available to be viewed throughout the building, curriculum-based hands-on activities as well. We're really thrilled to partner with Bourne Substance Free Coalition again to host Hidden in Plain Sight for the BMS families. Thank you, Donal, for arranging that. And this evening is open to students and families from all schools. It's a really nice opportunity for some of our BIS friends to get a glimpse into the middle school if they'd like to come, and parents. Ice cream is available from our PTA, and we are having our book fair to coincide with that, and it is buy one, get one, I believe.
The ice cream?
Not the ice cream. One, one per customer. Books. Buy one, get one. Grade six is off to Camp Borndale next Tuesday. They will be returning on Friday, and grade eight will be heading to Washington, DC on May nineteenth. So our students and staff are so excited, and we know our students will grow leaps and bounds with these experiences. I really thank you all for your continued support of these curriculum experiences. It's really amazing for the kids to be able to participate in them, so thank you so much. And not to be left out, our grade seven students are going to Wacoit Bay, not as an overnight, but they get to spend a day at Wacoit Bay, which is a really fun field trip, and especially if the weather is good, they get to really explore the area, and the science teachers are very well-versed in the local ecology and climate and all that. So that's a really fantastic field trip. And then they also finish up the month with fishing on the canal and PE, so seventh grade gets a lot of fun as well. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you want, I have one other, my item to be voted on? Do you want me to do that now or later?
Later, but we'll bring it up quick.
Okay.
Thank you. Jessie Clements has the high school report?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Dr. McGuire is unable to be here this evening, so I just want to reiterate, and I know she would say the same thing, we are so proud of our interns and all of our seniors as they head towards graduation. We are super excited to celebrate our teaching staff next week, and she has some notes for me to read. What's interesting is, like, she forgot to mention Directors Day on Friday, but I know that she is so excited to celebrate on Friday because of the amazing work by that director. That works out. Please tell her I did. I've got to remember I said that. So, so congratulations to our art and music students, who held two wonderful nights of events last week with the art show and the cabaret. There is so much talent across our fine and performing arts programs. We are so lucky to be able to showcase these skills. We were also able to partner with the Bourne Substance Free Coalition for Hidden in Plain Sight for our parents on Thursday evening, and then again this Monday, along with the police department and the fire department. We held the first mock car crash event here in some time. We are so thankful to everyone who helped us pass along the message about safe driving habits, free of substances and distractions. We hope our students remember this message into prom and graduation season and beyond. Speaking of safe driving, we have been lucky enough to be the recipients of a state police-funded program on safe driving coming to Bourne High School on May twentieth. In a fun and engaging game show format, the Think Fast program will continue the conversation about student driver safety with our juniors and seniors. This program was a huge hit over at UCT recently, so we are excited to have them coming here as well. Juniors are looking forward to the prom this Friday evening at the Flying Bridge in Felma. Next Tuesday, we will begin AP exams, which will run between May sixth and May sixteenth. Teachers are wrapping up their instruction, and everyone is in review mode for the upcoming exams. We wish our AP students much success and know they will do well. The math MCAS are being held on May twenty-first and May twenty-second, and we know that students are well-prepared. And as you know, the student interns will host their final performance task at the student showcase on May twenty-first. Students will be performing in the Spring Musical, Beauty and the Beast, May sixteenth through the eighteenth. Please check out the sand sculpture outside the auditorium entrance, sponsored by the Nye Foundation, and art students will learn how to sculpt tomorrow and will add their pieces to the overall display. Our student performers are excited to be holding teaser events for the musical at each of the other schools prior to the main shows as well. It's incredible to know that the seniors' last day will be on May twenty-third, with graduation on June first. The class advisors have a full slate of events planned for them leading up to the big day. And finally, it's a busy, wonderful time at the high school, and we're so excited to see this year at its height over the next few weeks. We work all year to get the students ready and to see their hard work pay off, and so many amazing culminating events is so fulfilling. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have two district-wise as well, so one is on the agenda. The Bourne celebrates everyone, and I know it's, it's still ahead of our June meeting, but I really want to make sure everyone gets this on their calendar. It's, it was a fun pilot event that we had last year over at BES. I believe we're bringing it here to the high school, so we'll have tables set up, and it really is to celebrate all of the unique similarities and differences of our community. So it could be, we're inviting families to come, we're inviting organizations to present, to have fun, interactive tables. We had things on everything from your cultural heritage to the uniqueness of your abilities or disabilities, and so it was, it was a really neat event. But what we have this time is a special musical guest, Candida Rhodes and the Cabo Jazz Ensemble. If you haven't heard this amazing Cape Verdean jazz ensemble, you've got to come just to hear them. So they'll do a forty-five-minute set that will close us out, so it'll be seven fifteen to eight o'clock. But earlier in the day, thanks to a Nye grant, we'll actually be working with students from BIS and the high school, student musicians who will perform with them at night for the finale. So it's an awful good time, so I hope folks will come out for that. The other one that you don't want to miss, and I do hope that many of you can come, is our retiree celebration, and that's on the twenty-fourth of May at 8:00 a.m. is when the program starts. We will have breakfast items out starting at 7:30 for all the early birds who like to come and grab a coffee, but we'll start for our twelve retirees. We don't know if all of them will be with us, but it's always a wonderful event to celebrate them. They get to choose their walking music, so their, you know, a song that either represents how great they're feeling about retirement or just their favorite song, and then they get to hear all the accolades from all the different groups, including the school committee. So I hope that all of you will come out for that. And again, that's 8:00 a.m. in our auditorium here on the twenty-fourth. So May will be jam-packed, and so will June, who are looking forward to a really great end to our pretty awesome school year. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I'm going to take something out of order, because Mrs. Hawkes has been sitting there so patiently.
Perfect.
And I know there's, I know, after a long workday, so is, if that's okay with the committee for, because it's a vote, that wouldn't be until the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Kristy Hawkes. I'm here as a parent tonight, and so I'm representing the Bourne Boys Lacrosse Boosters, and we're asking for permission to hang banners as a fundraiser to raise money for our team for enrichment, extra things. It goes towards senior gifts, senior banquet, team gifts, and then any necessities that the team needs. So if there's any way we could do it for this year, and maybe two more, so I don't have to, no.
What was that?
If we could do it for this year and the next two.
Yeah, I know, we'd like to do five years.
So do we, actually, so you have to fill out the application, the application, we have to prove it every year, is that what it is? Because if we have a policy, I mean, I guess that's what policies do.
So right now, the policy is at every instance, but it's not to say we couldn't amend the policy, to say if it's the same fundraiser, the same... policy, to say if it's the same fundraiser, the same year.
Right.
You know, we could maybe work on that, but the policy would have to be changed.
Is it just a dollar amount that sets it apart from any other fundraiser?
It's the, it's the fact that it's advertising on a public space. That's what puts it into that policy.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, because it's being hung.
Well, you are in luck, because we have finished all of our policies for MASK, so we'll put that one on the next meeting.
To amend the policy. It makes a lot of sense.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Okay, so any questions about that? Policy is linked, and we.
It was approved last year.
Approved last year, right, so. Questions? Okay.
I'll move to approve the Bourne High School Lacrosse Booster Fundraising.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of approving Bourne Lacrosse Booster Fundraising? Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting. And then, if there's anyone, we have to pre-approve, oh, we have to do the final approval for Washington, oh, no, this is pre-approval for next year's Washington DC field trip.
Okay, great. Get that out.
That's you. I did bring the sample from this year from the company, if you're interested in seeing it. What I'm seeking is the opportunity to schedule the trip for next year with the same company Close Up that we used last year, and we're successfully so far using this year. We have not picked a date yet with them. We'll do that once the trip is concluded. I do have, if you want to see the materials, it's very similar materials to what you've seen before. I don't think there's a lot that would have changed. No, don't have, I'm not for everybody, but I'll put it in here. They've been great to work with. They arranged pretty much all the components of the trip, the hotel, the, you know, all the pieces. Parents pay them directly, and they can choose to purchase. Trip insurance directly through Close Up, which is also nice, so if a parent chooses to purchase the trip insurance, and then something happens where they opt for their student not to go, they can get their refund. And it has, and then they help us customize the events that we participate in throughout the week, so.
Is this a new rule that you're using?
This is, this, next year will be the third year if we.
Oh, okay.
Receive your approval. Go forward. But we had a very successful trip with them last year. I mean, we did have a, we had the bus issue last year, but that just was the bus. It had nothing to do with Close Up, the bus broke down.
Any questions?
I'll move to pre-approve the Bourne Middle School Washington DC Field Trip for May 2025.
Second.
All those in favor of approving, pre-approving the Washington DC Field Trip for 2025?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your support.
Okay, now we can move back. Thank you. For taking those out of order. Okay, so, subcommittees, Curriculum Subcommittee.
Maureen.
We met Monday to look at the materials for that. The chemistry, biology, and psychology documents want to purchase through a grant, an envisioned pathways implementation grant, which will cross out of our budget, but chemistry and biology are through the SAVIS company, and our AP Bio and our AP Psych are updated materials, which I guess we learned have to be updated every 10 years to be part of an AP program. So, materials look wonderful, so Karen and I, we get the approval from the committee, so they get these textbooks ordered. There was four teachers on the committee for the chemistry and biology, looking at four different programs, along with Jessie and the Science Consultant Karen Rose, and it was unanimous vote for this SAVIS company. So, I don't see the vote on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't know if we realized it needed to be.
Do we need to vote for that agenda?
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, it, the meeting came after the agenda went out, but you could choose to vote to put it on the agenda?
Okay.
Because it was, you know, part of a report, and then you, so you have to do two votes.
Yes, okay.
Put it on, and then vote for it.
So, I am going to make a motion to put the vote for the.
Science textbooks as presented.
Yep, science textbooks as presented.
I'll move.
Okay, all those in favor of adding this vote to the agenda? Aye. Opposed? Okay, great, okay.
I'll move approval of the textbooks that were recommended as presented.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great, textbooks approved.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. All right, Policies Subcommittee, we actually have a lot of policies to approve this evening, but many of them had to do with technology. So, I'll just start with the first policy. So, we discussed policy EFD, which is School Nutrition Program Charge Policy, and we talked about the process for students adding money in account, parents being sent a letter informing of the process. Parents should contact the building principal or building administrative assistant. Students are not allowed to purchase additional lunches or snacks if they don't have sufficient funds on their accounts. And the first meal for breakfast and lunch is free at State Massachusetts. So, we have the policy in the folder for approval. Did anyone have any questions about policy EFD, School Nutrition Program Charge Policy? We only made very minor changes to this.
Can we discuss that we could update it to if it changed as far as if I'm in the state?
Right. Any questions? Okay.
Look for a motion.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the policy EFD.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving policy EFD? Aye. Opposed? Okay, approved. And then, we talked about a series of technology policies. So, Chris Oliver took these to the Technology Subcommittee, and they worked on them, they reviewed them, they modified them and amended them to meet the needs of the district. So, all of the policies that are in the folder have already been approved by the Technology Subcommittee and were then again approved by the Policies Subcommittee, because we felt that if Technology Subcommittee were to make changes, it would be more appropriate than Policies Subcommittee, making changes to these policies. So, the only, so we have to actually remove policy EHAA, which was our old policy, oh my gosh, so many.
Acceptable use policy.
It was our old acceptable use policy, is that what it was called? Acceptable, just acceptable use policy. And then, there are a series that all fit into the acceptable use that we're voting on, that are all separate.
If I could ask, the purpose of very minor, but we didn't have, we didn't have access here to the old one, to the annual changes. Which is very minor.
It was a lot of this information all in one policy, and it was kind of.
Separated out.
Separated out, yeah.
It's right here. It just went on the website, because the old one is still on our website.
Right.
It might have been quite extensive to the one that you see on the agenda.
Got it.
And I think all the other ones are taking pieces of it.
Yes. Yeah. And just creating separate policies for each kind of subcategory from that first one. So, we need a vote to remove acceptable use policy EHAA and replace it with policy IJNCD.
I'll move.
Okay, so all those in favor of removing acceptable use policy EHAA and replacing with IJNCD? Aye. Opposed? Great, okay, so that's approved. And then, we, like I said, there was EH, no, EHBGBEE, oh, a new EHAA, IJNT, IJNDB, JICJ, KCD, and KDCB.
Do you want to think of them as a whole, or do you want to go around each one?
Does anyone have any questions? They have, they are in, they were in the folder, yeah.
I just, I just wanted to ask, because two of them, the IJNCD and the IJND, while they're all related to technology, those two have the wording, the superintendent in conjunction with the Director of Technology shall develop and implement appropriate procedures to provide guidance for access to digital resources. And the rest of the wording of those two policies as presented on the agenda really don't spell out anything specific, so the procedure seems like it would be the actual policy, and without the procedure listed, because it hasn't probably been developed yet, it seems like to me the policy doesn't hold much weight, because there's no.
Substance.
Substance to it. So, that was my take on it, and so I was just wondering if there was clarification or what other people thought, if these two should be held off to.
I just assumed it was because they're dealing with resources, both dealing with different resources. And since they already have been looked at and adapted by Technology Subcommittee, I didn't really question it any further than that, but I don't know, Dr. Joe, Chris isn't here to answer it.
I did speak with him briefly. He really sends his regrets, but it was an emergency tonight, so I said, okay, what do you need me to say or to answer? So, he knew there, because you had some discussion about it as well, so there's still some next steps with these. Procedures aren't policies, they're usually things that can be more fluid, so those procedures would need to be developed. And then, also, full disclosure, we'll need to match it up with our handbooks, will be part of our handbook, because it has a different title in the handbooks, and so those two syncing will happen within the next month, is my understanding, and we'll be able to have those ready. But you're right, you found the two things that don't yet sync.
So, could we hold off until we have more just definite wording? I mean, we could approve the policy, but then we really are leaving it open to what is going to support this wording kind of.
So, was the plan for him to come back and bring these back to Policies Subcommittee to change the wording and bring them back, or?
I don't believe so. I believe procedures are, again, management and how you do procedures, and they should be flexible and fluid, but if the committee would like to see things bulleted out of what those procedures would be, we can prepare that.
Well, isn't because the procedures could change as well?
Right.
So, this is just allowing for technology and, you know, whatever, to do the procedures that need to be, so this is kind of like giving them access to be able to make those changes and be fluid, right?
Right, yeah, whenever you see the word procedure.
Right. I mean, I didn't see any problem with policies. I thought they were, I thought leaving it.
It's a little vague, because it's, because procedures will change all the time. Like, some of the policies that we were going over were, you know, so out of sync for technology and so many different things, like, I think there was like pagers on, you know, that kind of stuff, so it was kind of, I think, specifically to be a little bit more broad, right?
Yeah, so when I read, like, the first one I have up is IJNCD, and I believe that had that line that you said there, "On the recommendation of the Superintendent in conjunction with the Director of Technology, the district shall determine when and which digital resources can be made available to the community." So, to me, that's saying, okay, we're going to issue laptops to all staff members, we're going to issue Chromebooks that can go home from grade six through 12, that type of thing. And it's something that would be fluid depending on what resources are where. We'll give pocket talks to newcomers, you know, and how we sign those out. But I'll be happy to have him bring something back.
I don't know what he would bring back for that one, like, I don't know what you'd add to it.
If I had a chance to, I would assume it was going to be a student handbook, and another chance to, right?
Yeah.
And the thought is that you might have more procedures to share at that point.
That actually, the student handbook one actually has some really good language in it that isn't policy-like, so he wanted to sync that up and get the titles the same, because the handbook actually says procedures instead of policy, so that was one tweak he wanted to make.
I'm just hesitant, only because it seems like these two policies depend on the procedure, and without the procedure, there's, doesn't seem to have a policy. It just.
But I don't see what the procedure's missing from IJNCD. It's just, it's, I don't know how you can make it specific without kind of limiting, because technology does change so much and.
Right, I mean, the basis of policy is the power and the technology committee to design the procedures.
Which is why we have a technology committee at this point, so I do feel comfortable with the policies, but I, I mean, if any, if we can vote to remove it, if you want to, you know, everyone feels like they want it removed and held off.
I don't think anybody can vote how they want to.
Okay, then why don't we do this? Why don't we take those two separately as a vote? Okay, so why don't we vote, that was IJN.
CDB.
CD.
What's that?
JI.
Yeah.
Okay, and JICJ, JICJ. Okay, so let's, let's vote on the others first, okay? Any questions about any of the other policies? All right, so, we need a motion to approve policies EHAA, EHBBGEE, IJNDB, KCD, and KDCB.
I'm sorry, it is a, it is a JICJ. IJND.
Okay, hang on, all right. Scratch that, that's okay. We need a motion to approve policies EHAA, EHBBGEE.
IJ.
IJNDB.
DB.
KCD, KDCB.
JICJ.
And JICJ.
So.
Second.
All those in favor of approving those policies? Aye. Opposed? Okay, good. So, then it's, so then the two in question are IJNCD and IJNDB. Okay, so we need a motion.
D, no B.
IJND.
Access to digital resources.
Okay, I see, okay. I should just be looking at my packet here, but, okay, go ahead.
So, the motion to approve policies IJNCD and IJND.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on this one, okay? Mac?
Yes.
Donnell?
Yes.
Maureen?
No.
Carrie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved. I think that's all of them. So, those are all of the technology policies. We are caught up with MASK, which is like wonderful, we just have a couple lingering policies, I know, it's a miracle.
Don't say it too loud, though.
I know, and I keep, actually, it's funny that you said it, because I keep checking the website to see if they have listed it, like, if they've put any more out, because there are always some put out in March, and not yet, so we'll just work on the few that we have lingering.
We also have the job description from that meeting.
Right, okay, and so, oh, let me get back to my notes here. Job descriptions, Executive Assistant for Special Education and Student Services. So, our current Executive Assistant Karen Paulson's retiring. Congratulations, Ms. Paulson. And there is a posting to fill the position, I'm not sure if that has been.
It's posted and in process.
Okay, so the old job description was outdated, it was bulky, and Kristen and Karen worked together to update the job description to meet the needs of the district. So, there are also some upcoming job descriptions that are going to be on future agendas, the ABA job, the BCBA, and CODA Certified Occupational Therapist will be coming up soon. But for tonight, we just need to approve the job description for the Executive Assistant for Special Education and Student Services.
You move to approve the job description for the Executive Assistant for Special Education and Student Services.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, job description approved. Thank you. All right, that's it for policy. Next is Budget Facilities, Paul.
I'll get Patrick Jordan, who might have one in the next week or so, because we have a next week.
Okay, okay, thank you. CPAC?
Yep, so we continue to meet, we are continuing to be a small group, there are about three to four parents that have really kind of stepped up and tried to organize themselves, so we continue. up and tried to organize themselves. So we continue to move forward. We have transferred over. The Facebook page is now kind of much more active. Chris was very helpful with that. And we applied through the Federation for a partnership that's, it's called Apple. And what the Federation for Children does is they really help to get CPAC groups organized, do some planning for events, help navigate the bylaws and different things that come up. So you apply, and we were selected to be one of the six districts that they'll be working with for next school year. Martha's Vineyard, Worcester, Hasid, I think, was another one. So we start that, training myself and one of the parents on the group. And Melissa Seato is going to also be an administrator. She's the assistant principal from Bourne Jail, who's also going to be participating. And so we're excited. I've never been through that program with them before, but we're, we're happy to have their guidance and support and hopefully can take this, keep the momentum going. So that's us from CPAC.
Thanks. Keep collaborating. Maureen?
I'll just say, last month, I was telling them they were interviewing for a new position as Director of Specialization, and they hired one, Dr. Joan Woodward from Fallon, who's going to start on July 25. You know, having their senior dinner this month also. So their, their activities, but the kids that will be leading the program are coming up, so they have it. It's always fun.
Do you get to go to that? Oh, great.
The whole board is invited, so it's good.
Okay, DBE, diversity, belonging, equity, inclusion.
I was getting confused too.
DBEI.
Yes, yes. So they had a meeting on Monday, and I missed it because of the Moncar crash. But we're really excited about this. I think the biggest thing right now is just kind of advertising it. So I have a question. Dr. McGuire had made that beautiful.
Flyer.
Flyer, yes. I believe she made it.
I'm not sure who made it.
I think it was her work. It looked like her little handprints. Are we allowed to post that around town?
Absolutely, yes.
Stores and things. It's so nice. She does such a great job. So, yeah, we can just post that on Facebook, and we'll make copies and post it around town. The Rotary from Sandwich Chapter is going to serve free food, so that's really exciting. And then we'll have a nice food truck, too. And we're still looking for more families to join us and more businesses, but it's going to be a great time.
It'll be, it'll be a really great event. And so, yeah, now that this was created and shared with the whole committee, and then we'll start pushing it out. We already have our PR people working on it. So it'll be exciting. And then the other, the other side of that coin for DEIB is we're continuing to do our book study. And so we're, as a group, we had a great meeting. I'm not sure if I already reported on it, for the first three chapters. And we're, we're passing off the facilitation of that. So I facilitated the first one. Jessie Clements will facilitate the next one, and then maybe someone else will step up. But we have, you know, some really great discussions about what we read in the book, what it made us think about, what we learned from it. So it's been, it's been a nice way to, you know, come together, do our own learning, but also come together and have some discussions. So, you know, we decided to kind of break apart and do the two things with DEIB, and I think it's working well this way. People who have more interest in one gravitate toward one, and some are doing both, which is really nice.
Great. And then Technology Committee, is there any report on that?
Yeah, Chris sent it along. So the Technology Committee met on April 23rd, where we created questions for the Spring 2024 District Technology Planning Survey. It was published last week, and the data will be shared in the updated technology plan. The results from the survey will be used to drive technology professional development and plan for the future. That's it. Okay, great.
All right, so we took care of all of our policies. So we just need a motion for warrants and payroll.
Move to approve warrants and payroll.
Second.
Roll call vote to approve warrants and payroll. Donnell?
Aye.
Maureen?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Say yes. Warrants and payroll approved. Vote to approve regular session minutes. We need a motion to approve regular session minutes from 4/3/24.
So move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving regular session minutes from 4/3/24?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, great. Approved. I think that's everything. We went out of order, so just making sure. Dr. Joe, is there anything I missed or anything that we?
Looks like we have them all.
Perfect. Okay, so next month, meeting is earlier.
What time?
Mark your calendars. I don't remember. Was it 5:00? Was it 5:00 or 5?
I believe it was 5:00.
On the fifth.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
So 5:00 on the fifth, okay.
Just checking.
Because it's the same night as the one.
Right.
So we can all just walk over there?
Yes.
It'll be right here?
Is it in the cafeteria or the gym?
It will be in the auditorium and throughout the hallways.
Okay, nice.
If there's an overflow, then yeah, probably the cafeteria.
5:00. Just checking. Yes, 5:00. All right, any final thoughts or questions, comments?
You know, I have a final thought. I would just like to, you know, in honor of the event, to work with you the last four years. And I was, I will share with you that just the growth and the transition and change has been amazing, right, to come on not long after Dr. Joe, to see changes in personnel, you know, commit during COVID, and then, right, some of the negotiations. I'm not sure which of the two was more straight, but it has just been an amazing opportunity. And I couldn't have dreamed in 2020, when I was appointed, that I'd actually be able to serve with my own daughter. And it's been the experience of a lifetime. So I just want to thank all of you for putting up with me and for the work to be done together, because I think it's been a great day. So thank you all.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
So if I could, I'll make the last motion to adjourn.
Okay, roll call vote to adjourn. Mac?
Yes.
Donnell?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Paul?
With a tear in my eye.
Carrie, yes, yes. Meeting adjourned 7:48 PM.